The meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for October 24th at 2017. And it is 10:00 a.m., and so we are starting on time. And I would like to start with salute to the flag, and I would like Ms. Amber Howell to please lead us in the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, would you do roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy Chair is absent. Marshburg Bigler Vice Chair?
Here.
Kitty Jung?
Present.
Von Hartung?
Here.
Jeanne Herman?
Here.
Assistant County Manager David Solero?
Here.
Paula Pirelli Assistant District Attorney?
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini Chief Deputy Clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And so we will move to number three. Mr. Solero, would you like me to read it, or would you like to?
I'll go ahead and do it.
All right, good.
This is item number three, public comment. Comment heard under this agenda item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during the individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments under this item may be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Solero, and I will call the names for people who want to make a public comment. I will call you two at a time, please, so if you would come forward. Ms. Darlene Hesse, and next is Ms. Tammy Holdstill.
Well, good morning, everyone. I feel like we're getting to be real good friends here, keep seeing all you guys, know you by your first names and all. Anyway, I wanted to say that all of us on the stand behind Wild Creek, we do want schools, and we are for education, but we are not at all for having a $30 million property be torn down and a school built on this property in a floodplain area. And Houston, I just want to remind you of Houston, what a terrible catastrophe that was, and they warned governments do not build on floodplains. Now, I've seen that whole, the golf course just doesn't have a floodplain down the center. Like Mr. Eckhart said, "We're going to build on the high side." Well, what about the ball fields? What about everything else that's going to be built on that property? That is just not a good idea. This property is so expensive, and it's so enjoyed by so many people, and there are so many beautiful animals, it's just a shame to take this down. Now, I thought that Reno and Sparks and Washoe County, I love your sign up here, you know, working together regionally to provide, sustain, and safe, secure, healthy community. Well, I believe in that, too, but I believe we should also be protecting open areas and green spaces. And the only thing that I could see could ever be built on their sides of school is a beautiful park, a beautiful park for all to enjoy. But I don't know if you people have been noticing all the building around here. How can our streets take any more traffic? Out in the Galleria, it's just filled with apartments. They're not, people aren't in there yet. I don't know where these people are going to go once they get onto the highways, it's just going to be congested. So, right now, when I look out in the morning, I see the traffic from a quarter to seven, to a quarter to eight, bumper-to-bumper traffic, and I cannot imagine how a school could even think about building a high school there. You need to be out, out towards Spanish Springs area to build another high school. And I'm also thinking, where are the roads around here? Wouldn't it be a good idea if you built some more roads to compensate for all this building? It's just unbelievable. It's a sad time, and I hope that you guys all reconsider this gorgeous property. And people will not be able, a lot of people in Sparks will not be able to play golf course, play at the golf course for the price of a regular golf course. That's made a lot of fun and entertainment for people, and I think you should really consider this floodplain because it will be an endless problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hesse. Ms. Tammy Holdstill, and then Ms. Kathleen Shoup.
Oh, boy. Is it chapped?
Overhead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, she has a handout that I will pass out to the board as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley, Swan Lake Recovery Committee. The water is still there, I'm still here. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I am going to be changing my script a little. Good morning, or, my grandmother always said, "You always want to catch flies with honey." Well, I'm out of honey, and you don't respond to it. I've kept coming here for many reasons. First of all, I didn't like being intimidated by the county manager and chair before the first community meeting. I don't like being lied to and the buck being passed all the time. I don't like my home and my way of life being threatened or endangered for the lack of competency by Washoe County staff. Maybe it's time to start cutting the top-heavy employees who don't do their fiduciary responsibility in for ones that are more responsive and active. We have put a lot of time and effort into our home, and I pay taxes. I've paid more taxes since we've done it, and I have not seen any results in Lemon Valley with the taxes that are being created. Let's go back to civics class. Washoe County, state, or go, State of Nevada, Washoe County, City of Reno. It's time for Washoe County and City of Reno to put their heads together and clean up the mess that they created. I see that on the agenda you have FEMA funds you'll be distributing. I'd like to know why Washoe County is having such a problem keeping great and financial employees on their payroll. Does it have to do with malfeasance? Washoe County has not done anything directly to correct the situation in Lemon Valley. It has not been prepared for winter. There are pumps missing from Pompeii in Arkansas. The poles, which I was told back in June for power were going to be installed, and they are not. There has to be, I also reported a public safety hazard back when Lemon Drive was opened. That has not been addressed. There's also signs back down again on the limits that somebody is cutting down and City of Reno is not putting back up. It's time to start fixing this. You see right there, that is big, huge pipe going in on Lear Boulevard and Sted Boulevard. Where is that, what is in that pipe going to go? It's going to Swan Lake, that's the only place it can go, and it's time to stop the issue and fix it before anything else goes wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kathleen Shoup. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
It's actually Shup, thank you.
Shup, sorry.
I live on the east side of the Wild Creek Golf Course, and I'm here to plead with you again to not turn it over to the Washoe County School District for building a high Just to recap some of the things that we've discussed, there's the increased traffic is, it's a monster, and it's going to get worse and worse, even without a school being built there. But if you put hordes of teenagers coming out at lunch breaks and after-school games and such, it is going to be awful, just awful. Now, there's an issue of ground pollution with herbicides and insecticides, as they have through the years been maintaining those greens. We don't want to lose the green space, we want to keep the green space. We'd like to keep it as perhaps a park, or just keep the golf course. The golf course can be turned around and become a profit, profitable venture after the affluent water bond is paid off, and if we get good management in there. I don't want to lose the animal habitat, the bird habitat, and it is also an earthquake zone, and it's not only in a flight path, but it's in the landing path. Those planes are coming down pretty low, and I don't believe it's really a safe place for a school to be built either because of that. The flooding, as Darlene mentioned, has been going on for several years, we've had floods I think it's wiser just to keep it as an open space, a green space, for the people who have paid their taxes and appreciate that sort of life and lifestyle. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Tracy Hall, and then Ms. Kathleen, Kathy Brandhorst.
Good morning, Tracy Hall, for the record. I'd like you all to look at me while I'm here, I only get three minutes, and I need to know you're paying attention to me, because at this point, I really feel like we're being ignored. Just so you know, I attend the city hall meetings as well, and they've actually come out and done tours with us. Why is the city interested in not the county coming out and seeing what we're living with? It's a big question you guys need to answer. The water's going to come back up again, as a matter of fact, the ditches are already backing up out there. The water's coming back. So now I'm going to be going back out there and removing stuff from my property that I've just paid taxes on, so you all know I did pay my taxes, yep, so you guys couldn't hold that against me. I'm going to be pulling my horse panels out, which, by the way, I'm still paying $2.25 a month to board my horse when I shouldn't have to. I've given up my lifestyle. I'm fighting for my lifestyle to bring back to me, and I shouldn't have to. I'm living in an apartment, which I do appreciate, but at this point, you guys think that that's going to shut me up, it's not. I'm tired, and you're not going to get rid of me. You will not. I need answers, I need a home back. Whether it be my land that I had to give up and walk away from in March, excuse me, sir, I'm up here.
Excuse me, I'm writing.
Okay, I asked you for my attention, your attention, thank you, I appreciate that.
Please, please, we're trying to run a professional meeting here.
And I just want to be noticed.
Here, here.
I pay my taxes, we have a small business in this town, too. We apply, we employ people, put food on their tables. We matter. We absolutely matter. Just because I'm not on that side of the bench doesn't mean I don't matter. We are tired of it. The winter is coming, and it's just going to happen again. Something needs to be done, and I do not want to come up here and be rude, but at this point, if that's what I got to do to get your attention, that's what I'm going to do. I attend meetings, and I'm not going to quit. So until I get recognized, and you guys want to come out and acknowledge what's going on out there, I'm going to come back. You don't like what I have to say, then come out and deal with us. Period. Come out and deal with us. I used to live on a property where I could keep my curtains open and not worry about my neighbors checking on me, had people looking in my living room window. That is an invasion of my privacy. I've given up too much, and I'm not going to walk away, and it's time for you guys to understand that. Absolutely fed up. You guys need to do your jobs and take care of your community. Quit waiting on FEMA to bail you out.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Don't engage.
I'm taking notes.
Shh, shh, that's all she wants.
She's trying to. Hello, Ms. Brandhorst.
Hello. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I am homeless right now, I have no place to go, I've been sleeping outside. And I know you don't really care, you know, if somebody's sleeping outside or not, but it's the truth. And you people seem to only care about what you need, what you want, and where you live. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, you can't really do this to yourselves either, because once a person has been evicted from their home, they are squatters now, and they do not, and they don't want to leave the property at all. They want to stay there, and we call them squatters because they do not pay rent, they do not pay gas, electric, they don't even pay their phone service, they don't even pay the sewer, they don't pay nothing, not even water. And you like to steal it from your neighbors, because you put up the poles and wires all over the property so that you could steal it for your own purposes, where you live, and you don't really live there at all. And I just wanted to let you know, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. I see all the poles and wires in this city, and even in Sparks. It's out of control. You people don't, you can't afford it, so you're going to steal it from all the neighbors, all the businesses, just so you could be more comfortable and pay nothing. The problem is, is not going to go away, it looks like. The more you come into our territory, Reno, Nevada, Sparks, Nevada, you think that you can shoot us down wherever we go, even on the buses, you turn around with your machine guns and open fire because we are in the U.S. military. That's not the way to do it, because sooner or later, you will have to serve the justice, which is to be destroyed yourselves. You can't be here in the United States in the first place when you come from the border of Mexico.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
Sam D-N-A-Diney, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government, the heart and soul and body and mind of Reno government. If anybody wants to challenge that, come up here. I have more time at these podiums than all of the rest of the citizens in the community added together. I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I've got gravitas in the background that all of those people up there would give their, would give their bloated salaries to have, oh wait, to have their bloated salaries anyway. These people up here should have to wear a button showing how much money you are paying for their job up there. $10,000 a month. Is anybody here making $10,000 a month just to sit up there, come to a couple of meetings, and the only thing you have to do, we did, that's difficult, is have to put up with Sam D-N-A-Diney, and now that young lady back there, I like her gumption. At any rate, those folks up here worried about the Wild Creek, they call it the Wild Creek Golf Course School Project, no, it's the Wild Creek Hug High School Jackhammer Boondoggle School Project. What it is, is a boondoggle, it's a boondoggle put together and perpetrated by the vote riggers for the developers to make more money off of it. Why are they spending $120 million to build a $40 million school? Explain that. And then rated, just another one of the boondoggles that I have to challenge, that I've been challenging for, for how long has it been? 1994, add it up. I've been to virtually every single one of these meetings, challenged, and I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. By the way, as far as that Wild Creek Boondoggle, I've got my freight-old $100 bill right here, and I'm betting anybody in this room who wants to bet that that project is not going to go through. It will not go through, you heard it from Sam right here, $100. Anybody want to come up here? And by the way, I continue to thank the sheriff for sending the deputies over here, two of them today, to protect Reno, to protect Sam against all of the nefarious things that might be happening in these rooms. Nice to have, and over in Reno, we have police officers protecting Sam. Colin Kaepernick is going to file a lawsuit, a federal lawsuit against the NFL for collusion. Sam Diney is going to file a federal lawsuit against the Reno media mouse wacko freaks for collusion, for collusion what? To hide Sam's truth. They've been burying Sam's truth for many, many, many years. They are a federally, publicly funded body, they have to obey the federal laws, the state laws, and I'm going to file a federal and state lawsuit against the Reno Gazette wacko freak media mouses for collusion.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
You're welcome, you're welcome, and you're welcome, and thank you, and you're welcome.
The next speaker is Mr. William Gilbert.
My name is William Gilbert.
Oh, boy.
My corporate name from Nevada, which you guys made me be, and my tribe name, Benjamin Warren Kreveling, for California. I'm representing Section 8, also the Whittaker Creek, which is the gateway for Peavine Creek, the gateway for, throughout the, to the promised land to our frontier, the Bernie Falls, Stock A, and we are in Stock B right now. And I just realized that this Whittaker Creek that I've been nominating and cleaning up, you know, and trying to sponsor for 2018 for community gardens, to be able to grow food out of this, from this water being used. This creek runs right into this magnificent school that you guys have, supposed to be, going to be building here, and I think it'd be great for this school to be, it's on the equator of Sparks in Nevada, or Sparks in Reno, Reno and Sparks, it's right on the equator there. It'd be a perfect management based around a watershed planning unit, based on this Whittaker Creek, which is actually the gateway for the Peavine Summit Plan that we hear about President Trump talking about, and which they don't know, even know where they're going. This is where we're going, this Whittaker Creek to this school. The school's going to be based on the watershed planning unit for Stock A and B, and the reason why A is involved is because Sun Valley Tower, Clock Tower, is right on the money with the servers of California Time Warner Landline System of the Stock A, the A-class. And so, so with us being B, B stocks, C would be Las Vegas, which involves our future funding for the future of our children, and for clean water and for food and so forth. And so, I suppose that this would be a great school, only if it's based around the watershed planning unit and Sparks in Nevada, or Reno, Sparks, as being, as one name. And until, until they turn 18, then it'd be a CD, CD data, but we don't want to get our children involved into stocks too much, you know, until they're 18. And so, and so anything before, anything before, you know, involving anything that's helping stock market, whatever, it'd be a CD account for them. And so, pretty much base it around the watershed planning unit, and know that Whittaker Creek is very important that we clean it up and have City of Reno go through the team and clean up that trash before they let that water through. And I got right here, works with SSC, Spanish Springs Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Okay, I have no more people listed on the public comment, so we will bring it back to the, to the dais, Mr. Manager.
Your next item is Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates, Requests for Information, and Topics for Future Agenda Items.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I just have a couple of items on the agenda. When we get to the consent item F, or 5F3, it has been requested that we remove that item from the agenda. And then, item 16 should not have been listed under public hearing, it is just a standard agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Jung?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. I would just like to announce that Thursday is the regularly scheduled Board of Health meeting at 1:00, and then Friday, as you know, is a state holiday, which is, I want to wish everybody a very happy Nevada Day, and I do consider Nevada my home. I've been here now 18 years, and I wouldn't choose any other place to live. So, Happy Nevada Day, and thank you, native Nevadans, for accepting me as one of your own.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioners, Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 21st, I was able to attend the Smart About Water presentation by Tumwa at the Lazy Five. We had nearly 90 participants. It was actually a very well-attended function, and it really, it talked about, you know, Tumwa's role with respect to water, some of the future plans that we have, and, you know, just how Tumwa is handling our water supply. And I was very impressed, staff did a wonderful job, we had regional planning staff there. It was, it was a very good function. I would, I'd like to have staff bring back the process, Mr. Solero, by which we're going to deal with areas of speeding, and how we're, how we're to report that, and how we're to have citizens report that. I'm still getting a number of calls on side roads in Spanish Springs, and I don't know whether it's just a function of law enforcement, or it's a function of changing the physical makeup of the road with respect to either stop signs or speed control devices like speed homes. I'd like to talk more about Lemon Valley, but my notes are incomplete, so I'll just leave it at that.
Commissioner Herman, did you have something you wanted to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, in that case, we'll bring it back, and we will close number four and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager.
Chair, your consent items start with 5A and run through 5, sorry, I, budging.
And Commissioners, does anybody want to have anything pulled?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Nothing pulled. I'd like to just thank Mr. Mathers. He'll be, in my opinion, sorely missed, I know he's not here today, but, you know, he's, he really did a wonderful job and showed us where we had some real issues. I mean, he uncovered quite a number of things that defined discrepancies on how Washoe County was doing business. If we don't have people like him in the fold, and it's not a suggestion that the department is not good, because it really is, but under his, under his guidance and his leadership, we were, we were very blessed. We, we found a lot of things, and were awakened to quite a number of things. He'll be, he'll be sorely missed by this commission.
Yes, he will, and as he said, he said to me when I was harassing him for leaving us, he said, "It's all for the kids." Isn't that sweet? So, yeah, good guy.
He's a very.
Going over to help the school district, which is, he's a real, he's going to be a real asset to him, and we're really going to miss him.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item 5F3 removed.
Okay. Before we vote, I do have public comment, but let me also point out to everyone, so that the public who is not really necessarily reading through all of this, notes that 5B1 talks about that we are canceling the November 21st, 2017, and December 26th, 2017 Board of County Commissioners, so the work from those commission meetings will be moved back to another commission meeting, so, just so everyone knows that. And I have on the agenda to speak Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. Ms. Brandhorst, could you tell us which item you're speaking on?
Yes, 5B3.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That would be the Nevada State Emergency Response Commission. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also, I mean, I am the United States President. United we stand, grant for $24,920, no county match required. Well, the grant term is retroactive in July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. It really doesn't tell us very much, but the Nevada State Emergency Response Commission. What do we mean by that? United we stand. We need justice, that's what we need. We need justice now in order to save our own lives. The grant that you have here to cover, it says no county match required. it says no county match required. What is that supposed to mean? We are the county, the Washoe County. Why do we need a grant for this? Is it lawsuits that you are covering up again to pay for your lawsuits that you have here in Reno, Nevada? Shooting people, isn't it? Shooting down people inside their homes because you need a place to live immediately. The Regional Emergency Medical Services Authority. The amount is $9,600. Again, is that more lawsuits that you have to cover up because the body has your hands all over it? Is that the real reason that you need to pay for your lawsuits again? Again, the Reno Police Department in the amount of $9,295. Oh, my God, the Reno Police Department. You have to ambush them every time because they had you arrested for jail. They had you arrested for prison. But you're not there, are you? No, you're sitting in chairs, you're, you know, in the audience. But why is that going on at the police department? You have to shoot them down to make sure that that's your revenge because you were arrested? $9,295 Sparks Fire Department. You know, that's another lawsuit you have to have paid in order to stay alive. Isn't that the truth? The Sparks Fire Department has enough to do in the hills when they're on fire.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. I have no further public comment signed in, so we'll bring this back to the board. And we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments from the Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And are we, we don't, we're not voting up there on consent? Oh, we are. Good, there it is. Please check your votes. All right, we will move on. And before we do the appearance, Mr. Manager, I'd like to suggest we do a block vote. Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that we are, did we announce, Mr. Manager, that we're going to pull item 11 yet?
We did not announce.
No, no, excuse me, not pull it, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hartong?
From the, from the block vote, what I would, what I would ask is that we have, before we hear item 11, I'd like to have, not pull it, pull it out of, I had it listed as a block, but I'd like to have an attorney-client so that we can have a short conversation about what transpired. I think it's important for us.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Librally? Okay.
Sure, Madam Chair. You can announce when your recess will be taking place and when you'll be returning, and we can use that time for the conference.
Okay.
So I would suggest, this was what I would propose, item seven, item eight, item nine, item 10, item 12. And I believe that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Would you have 13?
13. Oh, I do have it, I'm sorry. Item 13, I beg your pardon. Thank you, thank you for that reminder.
Okay, Mr. Manager, if you would read those for us.
I will. So item number seven is an acknowledged receipt of the change log attached as Exhibit A for the 2017-2018 assessment roll that results in a net increase of $341,460,812 in assessed values. Item number eight is approve a digital library access agreement between Washoe County Library System and OneDrive, retroactively for a two-year term beginning on July 14th, 2016, through July 12th, 2017. Now, that's a change in the agenda subject for $119,000. And from July 14th, 2017, through July 12th, 2018, for $167,000, totaling $286,000. And if approved, authorize the director to sign the agreement. Item number nine is recommendation to approve an agreement for consulting engineering services between Washoe County and Corolo Engineers Incorporated, commencing October 25th, 2017, through October 25th, 2018, to provide engineering services for sanitary sewer flow and water quality analysis in the existing collection system within the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and Spanish Springs service areas. Item number 10 is a recommendation to approve a 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, from the State of Nevada Division of Emergency Management for $170,877, which requires a $170,877 match, including funds to be used for food purchases and travel, retroactive from October 1st, 2016, through March 31st, 2018. If approved, authorize the county manager or his designated to sign the grant to word documents and allow the comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget adjustments. Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve the resolution to augment the capital improvement fund in the amount of $391,865.90 to increase expenditure authority for capital projects for fiscal year 2017-18, and direct the comptroller to make the appropriate budget adjustments. And finally, item number 13 is a recommendation to approve a veteran service office agreement in response to request for proposal RFP 3028-17 for community-based veteran services to the lowest responsible responsive proposer meeting specification between the Washoe County and Veterans Resource Center of America in the amount of up to $189,894 annually. Authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement retroactive October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2018, with the provision for up to two one-year extensions at Washoe County's option.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And with us today is the Director of the Human Services Department, Amber Howell, and she has a few words that she'd like to say on 13. So before we move forward, if she could come forward, and it's item 13, correct? Yes. Thank you, Ms. Howell.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I just wanted to highlight this program because we've had so much success with it. This contract that we've had with the Veteran Services Office has been in place since 2014. And really, the intent behind this project was so that you would have experienced community-based veterans services that we could collaborate with within our department. Prior to this agreement, there was no formal process to help veterans with, to assist with applications for pensions, for medical services, that type of thing. And at the time, there were 50,000 vets that didn't have a place to be served. So we're very happy and proud of the program that we've developed in collaboration with the VSO office. And really, what we've done is locally, the VSO is available for walk-ins. They do outreach to the homeless, whether it's in shelters or in their residence, doing telephone calls. And what we have found nationally that anytime a state or a local ordinance has this type of collaboration, it really increases the pension and compensation to veterans. So we have seen huge success in this program, and we're very excited about it. So what we have seen, so they provide us an annual report, which is very helpful, and I'll send to all of you as well. They serve 25 clients per week, so that's about 1,300 annually, which is a significant amount that we're reaching for veterans. So 552 clients have been served so far, and each of their claims can be anywhere from $12,000 for a VA pension to about $34,000 for a disability compensation. So we're really proud of this program. It's worked really well, we want to continue it. It was a gap within our community and for veterans, and it's something that we're very proud of, and we're, you know, very thankful and grateful that we have an organization locally that helps us tie those services together so that we're working collaboratively to help veterans get back to some type of normalcy and help them with the future, whether it's through compensation or support or any other type of services that they have. So we would just like to thank them for their continued support and collaboration with us.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. It's such an important project to work with our veterans, to do anything we can to help our veterans. And so this is a very good project, and thank you for the information. Commissioner Jung?
Hi, and thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Howell. I want to ask you, are you working with the local veteran, VFWs, to help identify? Because I know they get phone calls. My dad's a chaplain for Post 9211, and they get phone calls for people that are transient through here, and they can help them out with like $50. But I wonder if you could connect with them and have this veteran service officer work a little bit more homegrown with the different posts that are around. There's like three in this community.
Howell, for the record, I absolutely will make sure that they have that number and information so there's no delays or gaps or continuity of services. So I appreciate the recommendation.
Sure. And then what's the address of the walk-in facility? Because I think that's important, that we push that out through communications. If you don't have it right here with you, I didn't mean to get you. We'll just make sure that Community Relations pushes that out too, so people know where they can walk in.
I did have it, but it's back at my purse. But it's the Reno Resource Center, but I will provide it to all of you and give it to the communications team.
I believe it's on Plum Lane and Plum and Sierra, or Plumas, it used to be.
I will be sure and get you the address.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, and this, I'm not an original thinker when I say this, but I don't think that homeless and veterans should be two words that ever go together. So thank you for helping to eradicate that. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, I appreciate it. Commissioners? I see no other, thank you, Ms. Howell, very much. Thank you for the great job you're doing. I see no other public comment on this, and so we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, there is public comment.
Oh.
On the block vote.
Oh. So I need to put it on seven. I'm not getting it.
I can call.
Will you call it, please, Madam Clerk?
First, we have Ms. Starlin Laura, and then we have Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Hello, Ms. Laura.
Good morning. See if I can get this, there we go. Good morning, I am Starlin Laura. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for the Northern Nevada Veterans Resource Center. So I'm hoping that I can answer any of your questions. But first, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to talk about this amazing program and what we've been able to do at the Veterans Resource Center. But also, just highlight a little bit about the program. So we are located at 419 West Plum Lane, so it's the intersection of Plum and Plumas. The organization focuses and is able to target not only the homeless population, but our senior veterans. So we are able to look at any of their needs, whether it's just filing a claim for service-connected disability, non-service-connected pension, addressing any of their homeless barriers, connecting them to social services within the city and within the county, and addressing any of their healthcare needs within the Veterans Administration, and trying to figure out the holistic wraparound approach to ensure that not only are we submitting claims for the Veterans Administration, excuse me, from the Veterans Administration, but we also are addressing any other obstacles that might be preventing them from having stabilized housing or educational options, educational benefits, and anything else within the sphere of veteran services. Any questions? Or is that just wait to the next part?
Thank you, Ms. Laura.
Can we ask her a question?
You certainly, wait a minute, can we? Public comment?
Veteran services, Mr. Librally?
Yeah, this is a, Madam Chair, this is a regular agenda item listed on your, on your block vote.
So you can.
Public comment was, was asked for. If Commissioners have questions, they can ask them. It's a, it's a regular agenda item.
Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you said about issues with homeless barriers. If a veteran comes to you, what's the, what's the process by which you assist them in finding housing and dealing with that?
So the organization has a two-targeted approach. One is my role, which is helping to identify any funding sources that may be available to help substantiate their income to ensure that their housing is stabilized. The other half of the organization focuses on the immediate housing needs. So we have our Behavioral Health Center, which houses 25 veterans a night. And we're able to bring them off the street immediately and address any of their psychological barriers and behavioral health issue barriers. Connecting them with the Healthcare for Homeless Veterans is also a big part of that, that is administered through the Veterans Administration. We administer a national grant from the Veterans Administration, Social Services, so it's SSVF, Supportive Services for Veterans and Their Families. And so we're able to not only use case management to address and identify affordable housing, but once we get them housed, we're able to provide case management to ensure that they are sustainable long-term.
Okay, so the, the 25, oh, I'll call it beds per night that you have, that's just a temporary thing until you can funnel them into a more permanent scenario?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful, okay. That's great information, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you so much.
All right, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Brandhorst. Which item are you speaking on today?
It'll be eight and nine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. The Digital Library Access Agreement between Washoe County Library System. I just wanted to let you know the two-year terms beginning on July 14th, 2016. I don't agree, you know, that they have been receiving all this money at all because the library still looks the same, the plants still look the same, the greenery still looks the same, and the books still look the same. The $167,000 and the $286,000 was the total. And if approved, authorize the director to sign the agreement library. Well, you know, the children like to hear in a group where a grown-up will read to them, and they like this. But it has not been done because they're afraid of the machine guns going in there while this is going on. They are all children, and I think the adults know that they are not safe anymore in the library. Also, I just wanted to let you know that those are lawsuits, again, that I just read to you, and they're to cover lawsuits and not really given to the library itself. Agreement for Consulting Engineering Services, this is number nine, Washoe County Corolo Engineers. I just wanted to let you know that the sanitary sewer flow. Well, one day I was watching my toilet, and my neighbors took that amount of water out of my toilet and put it into their toilet. Oh, my God. And I just wanted to let you know, I did not see no water at all because the neighbors don't have the running water to flush their toilets. This has been a very big issue for sanitary sewer flow. Water quality analysis in the existing collection system within the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I just wanted to let you know my hot water heater is always empty.
Okay, I have no more public comment, so we'll bring it back to the board. And we have a motion and a second, correct? And so we will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Madam Chair, could you repeat the motion and the second, please?
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Hartong.
Right.
I think Commissioner Jung seconded it, but she's not in the room. So, Madam Chair, will you second it?
I will second it, since Commissioner Jung is not here, but I believe she did second it. So, and the motion was to approve the block vote as read by our county manager.
Items seven, eight, nine, 10, 12.
All those who are in favor, please signify by voting on the board now. If you're opposed, motion carries, please affirm your vote. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Manager, I think we're back to six.
We are, we're back to six. Appearance of Mr. Doug Irwin, Senior Vice President of Entrepreneurial Development at Edon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing this morning?
Doing well, and nice to see you.
Good to see you as well. A little, okay, let's see here, here we go.
What's up, Nick?
Am I good?
Good.
I do have something to hand out, but I can hand out to you afterwards.
Okay, if you'll give it to the clerk, she'll pass them out for you.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today to give you a quick update on EDON and some of the activities of the entrepreneurial development team. So many of you have probably been, seen this slide more than a few times over the past few years, signifying the economic development stool. And so what I'm really here to talk to you about is what we like to call the kind of the most misunderstood component of EDON's role, which is the entrepreneurial development leg. And at the end of the day, EDON's really focused on job creation and economic prosperity for all of our citizens. So why focus on entrepreneurial development? Why not just bring in a lot more big companies, right? Why not support our companies here? So at the end of the day, the real purpose behind entrepreneurial development is, the real driver behind why we do this, is because entrepreneurs are really the creators of all new net job growth, and I'll dive into this in a little bit. But my program and our team's purpose is really to support entrepreneurs through all stages of their journey. And this is really built upon a foundation of five core values, where we really put the entrepreneurs first and foremost. We really try and raise the bar for the community, really, you know, providing new opportunities for, for our citizens. Our role is really to be of service, to help our entrepreneurs in our community, to make an impact, and to really represent the culture of entrepreneurship for our community. So let's look a little bit why entrepreneurial development is so important. If you look at the Kopman Foundation, which is about, you know, almost a $2 billion foundation, focused solely on entrepreneurial endeavors, it, their data shows that, you know, companies under five years of age are really the engines of economic prosperity. They are the new net job creators. And so companies, that's really where the, you know, the new jobs are, are created. But there's a real problem, and this is not a problem just locally, this is a problem nationally, that we're seeing one of the lowest levels of startup density in our country's history. So entrepreneurs are just not out there in the numbers that they were, doing what they have done. Now, we're on a little bit of an uptick, but the, this chart shows we've seen a decline steadily. And so that's really, at the end of the day, why it's important for organizations like EDON to focus on entrepreneurship. You know, going further, I mean, there's lots of problems and challenges in our community and other ones around jobs deficit, productivity growth, and wage, stagnant wages, and, you know, the entrepreneurial, the decline in entrepreneurship has some impact on that. So to kind of take a step back, so what does EDON do in this regard? So we have, for our entrepreneurial program, we have kind of a five-step strategy. It's really to communicate our region as a great place to be an entrepreneur, you know, this is a great place to raise a family and build your business. We catalyze programs. So we don't run a lot of programs, there's a couple we run and we'll talk about them, but what we really do is we try and lead, support entrepreneurs to lead their own programs. If any of you have ever been to a 1 Million Cups, that was something that was funded by EDON, but really led by entrepreneurs. And that's really what's important, because like all of us, you know, our time in our jobs may be limited, but entrepreneurs have a long-term perspective, like a 20-year horizon. So getting the entrepreneurs to lead is really what's most important. EDON has a really unique role as a community connector, because of our board and our, our work with companies, both big and small, we can kind of bridge those gaps and help entrepreneurs find the first customer, the right, the right support system, that type of thing. And then showcasing our successes. I don't know how many people are familiar with a company called Flirty, raised $16 million. Putting those things in the forefront, Filament, those, those small companies that are making big impacts, they really need to be showcased. It's, you know, we don't get the governor out to a lot of the, you know, the, the small companies when they hire four or five people, but those are the types of things that we try and highlight. And then a new, we've added a new strategic direction this year, which is to really attract more early-stage technology companies. We feel like the work over the past four or five years has built a really good foundation for our ecosystem, and now it's time to bring in companies that have more expertise and new technology and, you know, more funding to help boost our overall ecosystem. So that's a new thing for this year. So to give you an idea of the types of programs that we support, everything from Summit VMS, which is a program run by EDON, it's a MIT program that is a team-based mentoring program, to things like Maker Fair, I don't know if, if any of you have been out to Maker Fair the last couple of years, take the kids, weld some things, play with stuff, it's quite a fun, to things like Udacity, which is, we just announced a program last year, it's the first-of-its-kind online in-person software developer training program. And things like Tech Stars, where if you have 56 hours on a weekend, you can learn everything you need to know about being an entrepreneur, and then you have to just go do it. So these are just the kind of examples of the types of programs we support. And then some of the EDON-led initiatives, and some of the handouts that I'll provide for you, really around building the, the, the cultural stewardship, really building on our core values. So we've created a startup deck, which has most of the entrepreneurial resources for the community in it. We created a collaboration coin, which gives you a free coffee or beer at many of our local places, provided that you take somebody else out for it. And then we just ran the Startup Fair, which brought together 30 startup companies and 400 participants looking for jobs. And so that's really about trying to connect up, keep our students from leaving the community after their, after the work. So again, this is really focused on that cultural component. So here's just a couple of examples of the types of companies that we've supported. Some organic companies that have come through our programs, things like Trainer Road, which hires over, or employs over 50 people, Click Bio, which is doing some really cool stuff at the Innovation Center, and Filament, which I'll say some words that may not make a lot of sense, but like, it's an IoT blockchain technology company that raised a ton of money. And is really creating new opportunity for those technologists in our community. And then companies that we've attracted, Bomborah is a great example, their CTO came to our community just, his company's based in New York, it was the CTO about two years ago, it was just him, he worked out of one of our coworking spaces. Now they're, they've employed 40 people, a lot of you are our grads, all in data sciences and technology. And so those are the types of jobs that our community hasn't traditionally developed, and now, you know, companies like Bomborah, Bread, Capstack, Flirty, they're all hiring technologists out of our universities and, and really changing the fabric of our, our downtown in Reno and overall the opportunity. So that's all, you know, great, feel-good stuff, let's get down to some of the numbers. At the end of the day, what we, how we measure ourselves is on the number of jobs created, so not quite the massive numbers of a Tesla or Panasonic, but we're looking at about a couple hundred jobs a year. And we count them differently, we actually go, we say it's geeks in seats, we go around and actually like count people that are in jobs. And then we measure how many companies we've assisted. But I think the most interesting one that we've looked at is the amount of funding that our companies have raised. Historically, a company that was on a, a growth trajectory like this, like a, like a technology company would be pulled back into the Bay Area. Lot of dynamics going on now, but for the first time ever, we have five companies that are venture-backed, and they've raised over, collectively over $35 million in the last year, and that's up from $2 million in '14. So that's a pretty significant shift, and I don't see that actually slowing down. You know, that, that comes and goes, but I know we're looking forward to a big announcement, and all of those companies are likely to go raise more money. And when they raise that kind of money, that means that they can hire a lot more entrepreneur, or a lot more people. So hopefully that gives you a brief overview of what we're doing. Thank you for your time, and be happy to answer any questions, and I do have startup decks for you.
Thank you very much, it's so nice to see you, glad you're here. This is very interesting, and of course, one of the things that makes growth of business in Nevada, in Northern Nevada, in the Reno Sparks, greater Reno Sparks area, shall we say, so exciting, because it's a totally different type of industry than we've ever been involved with before. So it's really nice to see this kind of growth, plus high-tech, it's, jobs from the, for university students and stuff like that. So we really thank you very much for being here today, appreciate it. Commissioners, any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin. Mr. Irwin and I have had a number of conversations. He's still assisting, it's not, it's not gone yet, with a startup that, that I've been working on for quite some time. He's a wealth of knowledge, a great resource, but I had a question for you. You talked about the 30 startups that you brought in, we'll start with that. Are they actually viable companies and just looking to expand and grow, or are they just, just companies where they, they want to try to, to get it off the ground, so to speak, and, and really don't, aren't, aren't a viable company yet?
So it's a good question. You know, the, it's hard to pick winners, right? I mean, it, and so...
It's like the stock market.
Yeah, it's hard, and it's really not our job, so what we really do is, you know, try and assess to the best of our ability where, where, what the viability of the company is, but we help all entrepreneurs. So, you know, and the reason why you do that is because, let's say you bring in an entrepreneur that's just one person and an idea, and maybe it doesn't work out this time, but that person's probably likely to go on to do something else. And if you look at most entrepreneurs, they have, you know, a couple successes and a lot of failures behind them. So we really try not to pick winners. That said, when we, when we record them as a startup, they do have some minimum requirements, they have to, it has to be more than an idea, especially on the attraction side. Now, locally, you know, we, we also track who we help locally, it's a little bit looser there. So if that's someone, you know, with an idea, we get them to 1 Million Cups, we get them into a mentor program, we would track that. But companies that come in from outside the community have to have, they have to, there has to be a little bit more there, there. But it could literally just be two people, as long as they have a license and some money, and, you know, then, then we'll track them.
So on, on the money, you talked about entrepreneurial funds that were raised, $35,150,000, and that was, that's an impressive number. Is that angel investors, or are they, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use a loose word, are they like sharks? In other words, in other words, if you, if you're a fan of Shark Tank, these guys invest in companies that they want to be a part of, and they want to grow because they have an expertise in a particular area.
Great question. Well, I don't watch Shark Tank, because I get too much empathy pain for the entrepreneurs, honestly, I've been on the other side of that, so I don't like to do that. But it's, you know, it is different, I mean, it gives you a good flavor for it. So most of that money actually came into two companies, from venture capitalists, which are a little bit different than angels. That said, you know, our angel community is getting more organized, and in fact, we, we were just in Bend, Oregon, looking at their venture conference, and we got a, you know, a small federal grant to help us build a venture conference here. And the goal there really is to take the high net worth individuals and explain to them the value of being an angel investment. And it's, you know, it's not just like being an investor, it's actually, you kind of think about it as like venture philanthropy. It's like investing in the innovation ecosystem in your community. Because the downside risk on that kind of investment is like philanthropy, and the upside is like a 10x return. So if you can kind of get the, the high net worth folks in the community to think about that, it's really powerful and will have a long-term impact on the community. And it's sometimes hard to get those people engaged, because, you know, they've made money in real estate or other businesses and don't fully appreciate high-tech. But fortunately, there are some programs, and we'll be bringing a really interesting program in over the next year to help train those folks on how to become better stewards for the innovation economy.
Well, just, you know, closing comment, you and I are not done yet, and, and it's, it, it hasn't died by any stretch of the mile, in fact, I've been sort of broadening the, the base. I'll be coming back to you very soon, the, the ideas are, are very different than what they originally were, and so it's a, it's a good thing, and you guys are, you guys are a wealth of, of knowledge, and what a great resource we have right in our own community.
Yes.
And I, I applaud how much diverse knowledge EDON has. It's a, it's just a great group.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Definitely, thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you, Mr. Irwin, for being here. I just think you do a great job, and you are coming at this from the other side, having been yourself a successful entrepreneur in stand-up paddleboards. And I, I really am happy that we are sponsors of EDON, and I think some of the best and brightest in this valley work at EDON, Nancy McCormick, of course, Mr. Kazmierski, I'm gonna leave somebody out, Pam Mationi, you, some of the, the very best and brightest. And I'm wondering what the data is today that set Stan Thomas, thank you, that used to be my, he used to live in the same apartment building as I did in Arcata, California, as an undergrad. Weird. Small world. But when, when we were looking at this before, maybe, I don't know, eight years ago, during the worst part of the recession, what we were finding is that high net worth individuals on this side of the mountain, right, from Incline and all those other areas, don't look to invest in Nevada corporations, they're still sucked into Silicon Valley. Has that changed?
So that's a great question. It's kind of a double-sided problem, right? So you have, you have those investors that have good networks and great opportunities. I mean, the Bay Area is the most successful high-tech startup community, so, you know, it's kind of not fair to compare Apples to, you know, those types of investment opportunities. So what we've spent for the last four or five years is really building programs like Summit VMS, like Ted, like all these programs to help our entrepreneurs be able to, to at least compete at that same level from an ideation standpoint and to build their team. So we're not there yet, but what we've, so that's part of the problem, so raise the entrepreneurs to, to the level that they can compete with their peers in the valley. That's improving, and then you also need a set of entrepreneur, or investors that are really committed to the area. And I'm not to say that our, our angels in Incline aren't, but there's a whole broader group of people that have grown up here, that, you know, maybe are multi-generational here, that it's just never been part of our community, so they just don't know that those are the types of opportunities. So, and, you know, and a startup investment deal looks so different than a real estate deal, and, you know, when people go, I'm gonna give you $100,000 for 2% of your company, like, that doesn't make any sense to me. So it takes some real education for them to understand the differences. So with that said, we're seeing more activity from our local angel groups. Company in particular, Breadware, came from Santa Barbara, and they raised about $750,000, and that all came locally. And the only reason why Breadware came here is because they were able to raise money here, which, again, is kind of a unique thing in the world. And, you know, Filament, there's a, it's a long story, so I won't go into it, but let's just say the locals, Filament was in dire straits, they needed a bridge loan, our local investors helped them with that small bridge loan, and they went on to go raise their $16 million. So our angels are definitely being more active, but there's still a lot of opportunity there.
Yep, great, thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Irwin, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate your time.
How would you like me to give these to you?
If you'll give them to the clerk, she will pass them out.
Perfect, thank you. I hope you have a great rest of your day, thank you.
Thank you, you too. Mr. Manager?
I believe that'll take us to item number 14, and while Senior Planner Chad Geisinger comes up to the podium, I'll go ahead and read this item.
No, because we'll do that in a little session.
This is a recommendation to direct staff to forward an advisory recommendation to the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency, TMRPA, stating the county's position, either in support or opposition to, on a private property owner request submitted by Teton Development Corporation on behalf of the current property owner, Dorothy Town Trust, to amend the boundaries of the Trucking Meadows Service Area, TMSA, and the Reno Sphere of Influence, SOI, thereby amending the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan, TMRP. The request at an amendment would remove plus or minus 83 acres of property from the city of Reno, TMSA, SOI, and place it within the area of the TMSA subject to the Washoe County Planning Jurisdiction. The subject properties are located approximately one mile south of the junction of the Mount Rose Highway and Old US Highway 395, on the east side of Old US Highway 395, starting at Town Drive and terminating at Rhodes Road. APNs 017-02018, 017-30102, 017-30124, 017-30128, and 017-30129. Per TMRP, Module 1, the TMSA in the, in the area in Washoe County that is identified in the TMRP maps and within which municipal services, including water and sewer, are available for generally more intense development. Under the TMRP, this amendment would reduce the remaining acreage available to Washoe County to expand the size of the TMSA subject to Washoe County Planning jurisdiction. Now, Mr. Geisinger's gonna correct these numbers, so I'm gonna read them as they're stated here, but they have changed a little bit from some recent information. So this is for planning jurisdiction from 164 acres to 81 acres, assuming the previously submitted 80-acre TMSA amendment requested by the Washoe County School District is approved.
Say that again, say the numbers again, 164 to 81?
164 to 81, assuming the submitted 80 acres already for these middle school in, in Sun Valley is approved by the regional plan.
Okay, okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chad Geisinger, Senior Planner with Community Services Department, Planning and Building Division. Apologize for that lengthy agenda description, it's a little out of my control, but we've got through it. I'd like to start my presentation by putting some of those words into a picture. And so pictured before you is the subject properties that we will, we will be discussing today. It is located approximately one mile south of the intersection of Mount Rose Highway and Geiger Grade. And here's a close-up of the particular properties that are involved in this amendment request. As you can see, it is located on the east side of US 395 alternate, going through Steamboat Pleasant Valley area, beginning at Town Drive and terminating at the Rhodes Road, Road. As you can see from the aerial photography, the property is currently vacant, and Steamboat Creek runs roughly through the, the center of the collective properties. So by way of some background, set the stage, the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency has received what is a private property owner request to amend the regional plan. There are, there are two ways that the regional plan is typically amended, one is at the request of a, a local government, the other is through a process wherein a private property owner can request an amendment. The requested amendment would change the boundary of the Trucking Meadows Services Area and the Sphere of Influence in the Steamboat Pleasant Valley area. It's roughly the
roughly the southern terminus of the current City of Reno Sphere of Influence. The reason why I will amend both is because after the 2008 regional plan update, the municipal services area concept was combined with the Sphere of Influence, so they are now one and the same. So an amendment to one is amendment to the other. The amendment would remove eighty-three acres from Reno's planning jurisdiction. Reno has exerted planning authority over this property, and place it back within the county's planning authority. Here is a picture of the before and after of the amendment. Pictured on the left, in green, is the subject property. The, the red hatch is the Sphere of Influence, and the gray area is the current City of Reno municipal boundary. On the right-hand side is what the Sphere of Influence would look like should this request be approved by the Regional Planning Governing Board. So a little more detail on the adopted procedure for processing amendments to the regional plan. It begins with sponsorship by the Regional Planning Commission. In this case, the private property owner had an item before the RPC. The RPC considers the amendment only and not the merits of the request at that time. It's basically just a gatekeeper scenario where they agree to allow the, the process to move forward. The amendment request is then forwarded to each affected local government, and that is where we are at now, which is the reason for the red arrow there. The local governments provide an advisory recommendation back to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and then it is placed on the agenda for a public hearing at the Regional Planning Commission, that they then do decide on the merits of the amendment and make a recommendation to the Regional Planning Governing Board, and the governing board does make the final determination on whether to approve the amendment. Property owners requesting the amendment in order to essentially move forward with development plans. I believe there is a subdivision, a housing subdivision being contemplated in the property. Annexation into the City of Reno was requested by the applicant previously, but the request was not approved, and the application was ultimately pulled. Based on the application material submitted by the applicant, it appears that Reno declined to annex the property over concerns about providing services and over budget constraints, primarily in the area of fire and emergency services. However, Reno still retains planning jurisdiction of the property, so therefore, the applicant is more or less being caught in a regulatory no-man's land at the moment and cannot move forward with any plans, one way or the other, this time. As I mentioned, the subject properties are within the, currently within Reno's planning jurisdiction, and they, that's accomplished by the City of Reno, what's exerting what's called exerted territory, extraterritorial jurisdiction. That is done through the master planning process. So the City of Reno has master planned the, the properties and has placed the area within their program of annexation, but has not annexed the property, and so therefore, the county zoning is still in place. The master plan designations adopted by the City of Reno roughly correlate to the previous county master plan, area plan designations, and the current zoning. And I have a graphic of that on the next slide, give you some more detail. Staff understanding that the property owner did request a master plan amendment and a zoning change at the City of Reno, but those applications were also ultimately pulled. If approved, the county zoning would remain the same as it is today, but it would necessitate the county then amending the respective area plans that cover the subject property. There are actually two area plans. The Southeast Truckee Meadows Area Plan covers the very northern portion of the subject property, and the South Valleys Area Plan covers the remainder of the property. That process would more or less involve simply adopting county master plan designations that correlate to the existing zoning. So for the low-density suburban areas, you would, it would be suburban residential. For the commercial areas, it would become commercial master plan in the respective area plans. Here is the graphic of the master plan and zoning situation as it exists today. On the left is the current Reno master plan designations. The red color is urban residential commercial. The green is UT forty, basically the equivalent to the county's general rural. And the yellow is single-family residential. In the City of Reno, the master plan category of single-family residential covers a, a pretty wide range of potential lot sizes. I believe you can get down to a density of seven units an acre within that master plan category, if, if they had adopted zoning. On the right-hand side is the current Washoe County zoning. You can see a mixture of general rural, medium-density suburban, low-density suburban, and commercial designations. Comparing the two, they're, they roughly correlate. There's a little bit more UT forty going through the Steamboat Creek corridor on, on the Reno designations. And as I mentioned, the county zoning would remain the same regardless of the outcome. So, Truckee Meadows Services Area, there are some policy issues surrounding this amendment. The first of which is, if, if the subject property is removed from Reno's jurisdiction, does it come back into the county under the rural development area, or inside the Truckee Meadows Services Area where the county has planning authority? As you're aware, the county does not have Sphere of Influence, so that's, that's not an issue in this equation. Because the existing zoning on the property is commercial and also involves a density greater than one dwelling per five acres, there's essentially no choice. The, the property really has to come back into the Truckee Meadows Services Area under county jurisdiction and not the rural development area. Doing that, however, has some consequences for the county due, due to some unique situations as the policies are currently structured in the regional plan. There's two methods for amending the TMSA currently in the regional plan. The first is under policy 1.1.7.1, which requires an average of four persons per acre throughout a jurisdiction's TMSA before it can be allowed to expand the TMSA. The second method allows for a separate one-time allocation of an additional six hundred and forty acres of potential expansion to allow for development flexibility. So each jurisdiction was allocated six hundred and forty acres when this policy was adopted. So of these two methods, which one can the county use? Because the county will essentially be expanding its TMSA should this amendment go through. Well, the first cannot be utilized by the county because the county is nowhere near achieving four persons per acre throughout its Truckee Meadows Services Area where it has planning jurisdiction, largely to, due to a lot, a lot of low-density development that was previously approved in areas like Arrow Creek and Montrose that are in the TMSA. So, that would force the county to use the second method, which is the, the so-called bucket, the six hundred and forty acres, referred to as the bucket acreage. The county does not currently have a total of six hundred and forty acres remaining in that bucket due to previous expansions by the county, most of which ironically were mainly due to other SOI rollbacks that were processed by one city or the other. So, we've, as, as it stands today, there is a remaining bucket acreage of two hundred and forty-four acres out of that six hundred and forty. So if this amendment is approved by the Regional Planning Governing Board, and this is where there's some correction to the acreages listed in the agenda description, there would be a reduction of sixty-seven point five acres as a result of, of the, of the Steamboat Request. And then, as Mr. Solara mentioned, the Washoe County School District is requesting expansion in North Sun Valley, which would further reduce the bucket acreage by seventy-eight point eight acres. Adding those two together, subtracting from two hundred and forty-four, leaves you with a remainder of ninety-seven point seven acres that the county would have available for any other expansion needs. So let the record, let the record show that correction, if you will. The reason for the discrepancy is staff overlooked the fact that development-constrained areas actually subtracted from, from what applies to your bucket acreage, so you get, you get credit for that. So any area thirty percent slopes or greater. In this, in this case, it's the Steamboat Creek. There's roughly fifteen acres that the Regional Planning Agency has determined, and they make that determination, is development-constrained. So therefore, instead of eighty-three acres counting against the bucket, it will be seventy, sixty-seven and a half acres instead. So consideration of these amendments are supposed to be done just based on the merits of amending the boundary itself and not on any proposed future development activity. The county does have the ability to provide services to this area. It has been included in numerous facility plans over the years and updates to those plans in terms of sewer, water, traffic, et cetera. The county, the zoning has been in place since nineteen ninety-seven, and that's, the zoning is what forms the basis for facility planning analysis. So it has been included in those plans. The, the two local governments only provide advisory recommendations as part of this process. It is the Regional Planning Governing Board that makes the final decision, so the county doesn't really have complete control over this process. But staff hopes that changes to this process will occur as part of the regional plan update currently underway, both in terms of how, how the Truckee Meadows Services Area is sized in general, and also this, this process of the bucket acreage. I think there's consensus that nobody really thinks this is working that great. So. Staff recommends that the board hold discussion and formulate an advisory recommendation, and then direct staff to forward that recommendation on their behalf to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Possible motion. Staff is not making any recommendation as to the merits of the amendment itself. It's at the board's discretion. We are just requesting your advisory recommendation. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. I have a public comment from Mr. Garrett Gordon, who I'm going to guess represents the people who are asking to have this change made. So, so perhaps, no? No?
If you're gonna open public comment, we open public comment to everyone.
I know that. But I was gonna say, perhaps we should do public comment first. Mr. Gordon is the only person I have signed in.
Can you ask a few questions, or can we let public comment appear, because it might change their position?
Okay. Mr. Gordon, Commissioner Hartung has asked to allow him to speak first, so if...
It's just, it's just a question. In other, in other words, so Madam Chair, under, under discussion before we do this.
Fine.
A number of questions for staff with respect to how we sort of got where we are.
Okay.
Which might change the desired public comment that would be made.
And Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, just for the record, we do have a representative of the applicant in the audience.
Okay.
He's filling out a public comment card now.
I'm assuming he just signed.
He did.
Signed in, and so Mr. Riley's name has shown up. So, thank you, Mr. Manager, and let's go, Mr. Gordon, we will bring you up in a moment. Let's go back to Commissioner Hartung and let him ask his question of staff.
So, before we do that, I would, because we have the applicant here, I'd like to hear from the applicant first. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be so fickle. It's not my intent. But I'd like to hear from the applicant and what their position is, you know, with respect to, I mean, this is their application.
Yes.
And so I think it would be nice to hear from them. And then I have a couple of questions of staff. They might fill in some blanks for me here.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Riley?
Mr. Riley.
Riley, sorry.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, Mike Riley with Rubicon Design Group, here representing Teton Development Corporation. I think Chad did a good job in summarizing kind of what this, what this is, and he used the term, "we're kind of stuck in a jurisdictional no-man's land," and that's why we're here today. We, our client, Teton Development Corporation, wishes to pursue developing the property for single-family residential use. We filed the applications with the City of Reno, basically because we had to, that they were in the sphere, we were in the sphere of influence. As Chad indicated, the City of Reno felt that it was inappropriate to extend their, their boundary to, to include this property. And, you know, we heard kind of over and over from the neighborhood down there that this belonged in the county and not in the city, and didn't want to see the city encroachment. So with that, we, we withdrew our applications from Reno, seeing that there was really no appetite from Reno to take this on. So we need a path to move forward. So we filed the regional plan amendment so that we can move forward with the project in the county. We have not got to the level yet where we're designing a specific project. We want to make sure that we have the ability to move, move forward before we do that. But we envision a single-family residential use to utilize the existing zoning. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Riley, the existing use is not all residential, so are you suggesting that the applicant wants to leave the NC as NC and the residential as residential?
That is correct. Although the NC designation would allow for some residential development, per the standards in the Washoe County Development.
Correct, correct. And, and how about, and we don't need to talk about buffering standards, but, but right now, you guys, are you guys talking about density transfers or, or anything like that?
Potentially. Would, we'd look, obviously, we would protect Steamboat Creek within dedicated open space. So there might be some potential to transfer some of the density from the commercial, commercially zoned property to other areas more suitable for development on the site. But, like I say, we're, we're just getting into the very early phases of that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I have just some questions of staff.
Okay. So now, we will go to public comment. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Garrett Gordon, law firm of Lewis, Rook, Roth, Gerber, Christie. Today representing a property owners on Rhodes Road. Specifically, my client is Curtis and Judy Coulter, but they have kind of led the charge with the Rhodes Roads county residents. With regards to number one, the annexation, we oppose the annexation at City of Reno. We submitted a fiscal analysis. We believe the fiscal analysis of the City of Reno's staff report was flawed, so we submitted our own. And prior to a hearing, the application was, the application was withdrawn, and so there was no public hearing at the City of Reno. So we're here today with the sphere. Our biggest concern, are the Rhodes Roads folks' biggest concern is...
Excuse me just one moment, Mr. Gordon. Could we get the overhead? Mr. Gordon has laid a, something down on there, so if we could get the overhead. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Sure. The, the Rhodes Road County folks, my clients believe that this really should fall under the jurisdiction of the South Valleys Area Plan, specifically compatibility, specifically with, you can see the pink portion down on the southern end of the property. That's LDS one, one unit per acre. They will, not only today, but any point in the future, stand here and say it would be zone twenty, twenty-eight homes for that area. They would support that. They believe that's a great transition area, compatibility with regards to Rhodes Road, current existing homes. As you move up north, put as many units or commercial square footage as, as the land may deem appropriate, and this body deems appropriate, but that pink transition area and the twenty-eight homes there, we think is appropriate. And we would continue, just want to make the record clear, to oppose any density transfers or any open-space subdivision plans with regards to that pink area, not only for flooding concerns, but water concerns. And it's not that we're not talking about projects today, but we have, have a lot of experts involved and would oppose that at one point in the future. But we do acknowledge that if this came into the county, it would come in as is, and we would certainly stand down and support a development that looks like this existing zoning. I'm here for any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, and Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So, what your clients are saying is that they would constrain these private property order, owners to one home per acre?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you for the question. I wouldn't, I might word it a little differently than constrain. I would say, stay within the confines of the, of the existing zoning that would be placed on this property, as shown here, if the property came into the county. And that would be twenty-eight homes, one home per acre on that pink area.
I don't support that. And I don't just, I don't support that kind of development of one home per acre. I don't think it's sustainable. I think it leads to further sprawl and is really in some, in my mind, a bit of a taking. And then, what happens in this valley is remarkably, people that live in the south are afforded this one house per acre, completely unsustainable. But when you go up to my district in the north, in the north valleys, it is the densest, most, put people all in one place. So I think the county needs to get out of the business of one home per acre. The other thing that I would say, even though I'm not the boss of the market, and I'm not here as a protection, a protectionism for the landowner, nobody wants one home per acre anymore. Look at the condos that are going, and the townhomes downtown that are going for five hundred thousand dollars, specifically because young people and millennials don't want to mow lawns. They don't want to use all that water. It is completely irresponsible development and planning, and I will not support that. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Just respond briefly. As you know, for the history of dealing with me and my clients, we've always had an open mind, and no doesn't always mean no. No means no today, given we haven't seen the project. And if there's some open-space subdivision plan that comes forward, I, I will assure this body that I and my clients would roll up our sleeves and try to attempt to find compromise, as I always would. But for today, without seeing a project and knowing our compatibility with regards to the Rhodes Roads folks, we would oppose it as of, till right now.
Mr. Gordon, I think we've probably stepped a little outside of this agenda item. Our, our district attorney is making faces at me, so that's always a good sign that I've let it go too far.
Well, we all love land use, so we could talk for hours. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Hartung? Oh, wait a minute. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Lefarelli?
Just maybe a navigation coordinate. This, as, as several speakers have said, is not a project.
Correct.
This is a, this is a regional planning and service area discussion. So, the question on, on the table... So, the question on the table is, is this good policy? Should the county recommend this to the Regional Planning Agency, mindful of its bucket of available units and all that? Assuming regional approves it, it'll... There's a lot of work yet to be done to determine what may actually go there, and the kinds of issues that neighbors usually have will be appropriate at the time something is proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Leparelli. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chad, let's kind of figure out how we got where we are on the... for public record, because I think it's important. How did this... Let's... We'll take this out of the equation for just a second. How does a parcel end up in the SOI, in the sphere of influence? And how does jurisdictional oversight occur under that process? And does it have to be contiguous?
So, the... How property gets into the sphere of influence, a couple of ways. A local government can request an amendment to its sphere of influence to add land, and there's a series of findings and things that need to be made as part of that process.
Against the property owner's desire?
The local government can do that. Now, in the 2008 update, private property owners were afforded the opportunity... Actually, I think they could even do it in 2002. Can also request that the sphere of influence be amended.
But what if I don't want my property in the SOI? Then is it... I mean, is it possible for the city to overtake me with...
It is possible as part of the comprehensive update. Yeah, they... In my experience, they typically try to avoid that, the cities do. It's usually at the consent of the property owner, but not necessarily always.
Okay, so this property owner asked to go into the SOI originally?
That's my understanding, and it has been in the sphere of influence since 2002.
Okay. Does it have to be, when it's in the SOI, does it have to be contiguous with the City of Reno? Or can I decide that the chairs in the back of the room are in my SOI, regardless of the chairs in the front of the room?
Yeah, it does not have to be contiguous, and in fact, it is not currently, because you have Winnebago Ranch in the sphere of influence, for example.
You know, I'm well aware of that. That's... There's a whole bunch of these things that are sort of bubbling up now. So, it can happen without being contiguous. So, it's coming back to us, and we're being forced to take this out of our bucket, as it were, because the City of Reno doesn't want to deal with it. Am I correct in that? They want... They do not want to develop this under the current requests.
That's my understanding at this time.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have a choice?
Not really. It's the governing board that makes a decision. There's three votes from the county on the governing board if you opposed it. So, unless the other seven votes went along with opposing it, or the amount needed to defeat it, and I would say the simple answer is no.
So, this is an overarching question now, not just pertaining to this parcel, because we've got some stuff in Spanish Springs that this is also occurring on. What happens to the capacity that has been allocated by the governing body that was assigned to that parcel? Does it stay there, or does the county now have to figure out how to give that parcel capacity?
If you're referring to...
And I'm talking about wastewater. I'm talking about, you know, the infrastructure capacity.
So, the service provision is largely going to stay the same in terms of water and sewer. This is in the county's... The plant in the south there is what would be serving this property, which is run by the county. In terms of the bucket capacity, the amount of potential expansion, Reno does not incur any impact whatsoever from their bucket of 240 acres, the county does. In terms of fire, police, and things of that nature, I couldn't say it's going to depend on the nature of the development proposed there, but as I mentioned in my presentation, this area has been zoned this way since 1997. So, the sheriff's office, the fire department, I'm sure, has included, you know, demand in this area for potential service for quite some time.
Okay. You made a comment about extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Correct.
Talk a little bit more about that.
So, that's a process wherein either city exerts their planning jurisdiction within the sphere of influence. So, an amendment to the sphere of influence can be made, or it can be expanded as part of an update to the regional plan. So, county land that was once under county authority is now inside this thing called the sphere of influence, which is supposed to denote where the city desires to grow within the next 20 years. That process in and of itself does not establish the groundwork for processing development applications, for who will do code enforcement, for who will process building permits, things of that nature, right? So, there's a process outlined in NRS 278 whereby the cities do what's called exerting their jurisdiction. And the process that they use, or that's spelled out by state law, is is they first have to place the area within their program of annexation, which is supposed to be a seven-year area to accommodate seven years of population growth. Now, there was a lawsuit over that. The county came out on the wrong side of it. The SOI, largely, the majority of the SOI was placed within the program of annexation. There's been some changes to that since that time. And then, once that happens, the city is required to adopt master plan designations, which the city has done in this case, and then they're able to exert extraterritorial jurisdiction. After that point, all development activity is reviewed by the city, respective city. So, any, you know, subdivisions or special use permits, any type of action like that.
Okay. And it does fall between two area plans?
Correct.
So, what's the... I mean, that can be a little problematic in terms of trying to decide what's valid in one area plan versus another. So, what's the solution there, and how do we deal with that?
Well, it's going to be dealt with as part of amending those area plans. It's nothing new for county staff. We have boundaries. For example, the southwest and the forest area plans about one another, and the neighborhoods basically cross lines in those areas. And so, what are issues in one plan area are typically also issues in another plan area, in my experience.
Okay, so I'm going to play devil's advocate. So, essentially, what we've got, since we're going to be going to regional planning and doing an update to those plans and adding these two zones in those plans, these two parcels in those plans, what happens if they approve one and not the other?
There has to be some master plan...
So, you talked about the South Valleys plan, and you talked about the Southeast Truckee Meadows.
Right, so let's say one gets bogged down in that scenario. One gets approved before the other one. There is a translation table that has been adopted as part of the regional plan for this situation. So, in the interim, while the county is opening up those respective area plans to apply the county's master plan designations, there will be a placeholder translation designation based on that table. And so, it'll essentially revert to what the current master plan regime of the county is, which is for the commercial areas, neighborhood commercial and the general commercial, it will be commercial. For the general rural, the UT40 portion in Reno, it'll become general rural in the county on an interim basis until those area plans are updated. And, you know, theoretically, the master plan designations could change as part of that area plan update process. Now, however, you have this conundrum of existing county zoning, so the county can't adopt a master plan designation that doesn't authorize the underlying zoning. So, you would have to also change the zoning then at that point. So, that makes it even a little more complicated.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right. That's all I have for now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Jung, did you have... Okay, we have no further comments, and we... I see no further public comment.
So, actually, I do need to ask legal a question.
All right.
Mr. Leparelli, it was brought up by Mr. Gordon that he's representing Curtis Coulter, a fellow I've known for, gosh, probably 25, maybe even 30 years. He has represented me legally, and we have some ongoing business relationships. Is this something that I can just disclose, or do I need to recuse myself?
Madam Chair, disclosure is always helpful to keep the record clear on relationships. Unless Mr. Coulter is representing you currently on something that's somehow related to this item, he would not be in possession of any special knowledge about your potential legal interests. If he represents you occasionally in business matters, I don't see a connection between that and his interest in this deal. Later on down the line, when a project is proposed, that may affect Mr. Coulter or other neighbors' property rights. We may want to revisit the disclosure and the conflict question.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. So, we have no more public comment listed, and now we're looking for a motion?
So, Madam Chair...
Commissioner Hartung.
So, before I go ahead and make the motion, this is... I see this as an ongoing issue in the county, where, you know, suddenly the city has changed its mind with respect to parcels that they've decided to either annex or ultimately pull into the SOI. And I think that this is going to precipitate a much larger conversation with respect to the regional plan update. There are some kinks that are going to have to be worked out. But that said, I see no reason why we shouldn't move forward and allow the property owner to move the property back into the county's planning jurisdiction. So, I would make that motion.
All right.
To have staff move forward with that and process the application.
Okay, we have a motion to follow staff's request and move forward, or actually, follow staff's outline here. We've given them some direction and move forward to finalize this. Do I have a second? I will second it for purposes of working on this. And do we have any additional comments, commissioners? All right. All those in favor signify by saying... We'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like motion carries, and so we're just waiting. Yeah, I seconded it. Okay, everybody, please place their votes. And as it comes up on the screen, please check your vote. According to the votes, the motion carries, and we will now move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, that'll take us to item number 15, an update on wildfire season. And Chief Charlie Moore is here to give you the update.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the record, Charlie Moore, Fire Chief for Truckee Meadows Fire. May think that wildfire season is coming to an end, but I think history proves us... Proves the contrary. We've had our largest conflagrating fires between October and January. And I'm certainly not slowing down. We've responded to 14 fires in October alone. Seven have been in district for a total of 1.3 acres burned. The good thing for us is that relative humidities are coming up, so we may not see burn periods for more than 24 hours. But the scary thing is, is that BLM has shut down its resources for the season, so we no longer have aircraft. We don't have Raven right now because of an engine problem. So, aircraft is hard to come by in the event that we need it. So, we are going to shift focus to fuels management. And I mentioned at the BOFC meeting that we're going to do fuels management program coming this Saturday on October 28th and also November 18th. This was... Photo was my next-door neighbor, and really typifies the problem that homeowners have in disposing of green waste, is that you can't get very much in a can. So, we've added a location for green waste pickup, and that would be Hidden Valley, Station 37. So, we're going to have four locations for our pilot program. Station 16 on Eastlake Boulevard, Station 37 on West Hidden Valley Drive, Station... The volunteer station in Silver Lake, and the volunteer station at Lemon Valley. And we will take all green waste and chip what we can on-site, and then take whatever's left over to a green waste recycler. So, we've had a lot of good public feedback via email on the program, and I think we'll see a good turnout for that. I did want to mention that our crews came back from California after two weeks, and they have some amazing stories to tell. But talking to some other California chiefs, what is remarkable about the fire in California, particularly in Santa Rosa, is the fire moved through an area where it was predominantly lawns and swimming pools and didn't have a lot of interface areas as we typically see in Reno, in Sparks, and in Washoe County. So, can something like that happen here? The answer is yes, and it has, so it's good. Even though we're cooling off and we're starting to get a little bit of moisture, we still have some risk here in the valley until we get some snow on the ground. So, with that, I'd take any questions you might have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chief. You know, the Oakland Hills fire, for some reason, has always stuck with me, and that really is the... An example of what could happen to a lot of our outlying areas, Arrow Creek, Collin Ranch, other outlying areas that... And that's extremely frightening. So, it's nice the humidity's going up, and hopefully, we will see it's the end of fire season, even though we know it... In our hearts, we know it's probably not, but we can always pray, can't we? Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, and I'm glad you brought up the chipper, because I was going to ask you about that. Are you... When you take the chipper, let's just say a situation like this, where a constituent has a large pile that can be chipped, do you chip it first and then burn it, or is it easier to just go ahead and throw this into the burn box?
Material like this, it's easily chipped. And our plan is not to burn it after it's chipped, is to make it available for people to use in their gardens.
Yeah, no, that's exactly... I mean, I...
Good idea.
I love that. It makes a great ground cover as well, just depending on the size of the chip itself, you know? And I don't know whether you... I've never had a chipper that was, you know, a commercial-sized chipper. Everything that I've ever had is, you know, sort of the lawn boy size. And that's, you know, it's tenuous at best to chip with those things. So, I'm glad we're trying to reach out into these communities. Are we doing it on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, only on the weekends? How are we trying to schedule that, Chief?
Well, we're trying to do a soft rollout, and we really want to measure what people need to dispose of so we can plan in the spring to do this at a much larger scale. So, only two Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. on October 28th and November 18th. And come the spring, we intend to have it available every single weekend for...
And so, I'm going to make a suggestion, and maybe the chief can bring something back to us at some point in the future. Let's just say you go out and you do some chipping for folks, and they don't want those. They don't want it back. And if we can create sort of a reservoir, maybe what we can do is we'll give it to anyone who wants to come and haul it, and we'll ask them for a donation to potentially put into the fund to buy an additional burn box at some point.
Well, that would be a good question to have brought back to perhaps our next fire board.
Yeah, no, understood. Yeah, so it's just a suggestion for the chief to bring back to us, if it is possible, if the quantities are viable. Because I know some of these places, you can create a lot of material. And most people, I shouldn't say most people, but a lot of people don't want it. You know, just remove it from my property.
Well, we'll find a way to dispose of it, but burning is the least favorable option. And mulching it and composting it is the way we'd like to go, assuming we can find the green waste recycler to take it all.
Sure. All I'm saying is all of that chipped material that we... You know, as long as it's good, clean, chipped material, maybe we can sell it. And I don't mean sell it. And I don't mean sell it, I mean just, you know, give it away with the, you know, just give us a donation. We put that into our next burn box, because I think the burn box is a stellar idea, Chief. It's really, you know, for a lot of the places, I don't see it so much in Spanish Springs as high in need, but I do see a lot in the South Valleys.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Jung is on the list.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Is this only available to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District residents?
No, we're making it available to anybody that resides in the county, so-
So, I think we should get a lot of PR out about that, if you don't mind, because, you know, we're getting ready to update our regional plan and how, what kind of partners we are, and we're not requiring an address check to use our tax dollars that are dedicated from these homes for anybody and everybody who needs to get rid of green waste. I think that just demonstrates how important it is to us as a board in a county that we reduce our fires, not only accidental ones, but even people burning their wood because of the air quality issue, and that we're also proactive in providing people with great mulch and ground cover for the coming winter. So, if you could get Erin Holland or whomever it is on the horn about that, I think that would be great. And then I just have to let you know, Chief, I was, had another conversation this weekend with another constituent, and they cannot say enough of how much your fire service saves homes. And Red Rock, for an example, that fire, that home up on the hill that is completely surrounded, and then the two fires that we've had back-to-back, you know, right there south of the river by the old Patagonia, how close that got as well, and not a single structure. So, I want to pass that on to you publicly, that people have not stopped buzzing about how remarkably well our fire crew seem to be at preserving, of course, life and safety, but then after the fact, structures. So, appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that, I'll pass that on.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Commissioner Herman.
I would just want to express the concern that I would have in encouraging people to use chips for landscaping. It's, when that dries out, that burns faster than anything, so I'm always trying to keep all that sort of thing, combustible materials away from my house. So, just a thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Anything else, Chief?
I might add, to answer Commissioner Herman's question, that chips can be used in, you know, in horse pastures and things like that. So, where there's not so much fire risk, that might make a good additive to pastures. I'm not a rancher type, but I think it would have some applicability there, so. We would be happy to deliver some of this stuff, too. We have purchased a big dump trailer, and we can throw a lot of material in the back of that, and anybody that wants it, I might even throw in free delivery.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
I'd love to have some.
All right. Any other comments, Commissioners? Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here to give us an update on what's going on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Manager, I would suggest that we have a, I know we have a legal session, and we also have to go back and visit 11 for a discussion with our legal team. I would suggest we take a recess right now and get our legal session done, and then come back at, say, 1:00. Mr. Leporelli, will that work, if we are back at 1:00?
Works for us.
Okay, perfect. With that being said, we are in recess until 1:00. Call our meeting to order for the afternoon session, and it is, again, the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County for the October 24th, 2017, and we are going to go back to number 11. Mr. Manager.
Item number 11 is approve a settlement of the claim of Karen Thompson individually and as co-special administrator of the estate of Justin Thompson, Rick Thompson individually and as co-special administrator of the estate of Justin Thompson, Fred Wade, co-special administrator versus Washoe County et al., for a total sum of $500,000 for all claims against all defendants.
Okay, I have no public comments signed in.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Leporelli.
The board packet for today's meeting included a staff report describing this settlement I have given to the clerk, and I want the record to reflect that I did a three-page settlement agreement and release of claims between plaintiffs Karen Thompson, co-administrator of the estate of Justin Thompson, Rick Thompson individually and co-administer of the estate, and Fred Wade, special administrator, and Washoe County, and various employees of the sheriff's office. I have copies of the settlement agreement available if anyone present wishes to have one, and the settlement agreement is consistent with what the staff report says, that the, all the claims made by the plaintiffs are being settled through this agreement for a total sum of $500,000.
Thank you, Mr. Leporelli. Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. We have no public comments, any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
We'll call for the vote also. Excuse me. Please place your votes. Please check your votes. Please note that Commissioner Hartung is, has not returned, and is in another meeting, and will return shortly. Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, that'll take us to item number 16. Again, this is not a public hearing item, although it is listed that way in the agenda. So, this is an introduction, first reading, and ordinance amending chapter 80 of the Washoe County Code. Mrs. Clerk.
This will be bill number 1786, an ordinance amending chapter 80 of the Washoe County Code, Public Works, County Property, amending section 80.620, unlawful parking in designated zones, deleting section 80.640, Pringle Way, County Property, amending section 80.660, fines, bail, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'll introduce bill 1786, since I did ask for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Mr. Manager.
That takes us to our public hearings section.
Our public hearing is now open.
That's all right. This takes us to item number 17, public hearing for possible action to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, as requested by Doral Academy of Northern Nevada, and to approve a resolution approving Public Finance Authority Charter School Revenue Senior Bonds for Doral Academy of Northern Nevada, series 2017A-1, and Public Finance Authority Charter School Revenue Subordinate Bonds for Doral Academy of Northern Nevada, series 2017B, for purposes of section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Stop and think, what am I saying here? Thank you, Mr. Manager, and with that, we do have some public comment. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions? Anything they want to add? Okay, let's go to public comment. I will call Ms. Kathy Branthorst, and it doesn't look like she is with us. So, we will go to Mr. William O. Gilbert. I don't see him either. So, we will bring it back to the Commissioners, and I'm looking for a motion, one way or the other.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam?
I move to conduct-
Excuse me. I want to make sure this gets on the public record, that this is not asking Washoe County to issue any bonds or to incur any debt on Doral Academy's behalf. Instead, that we are holding the necessary public hearing and providing the approval as described herein. These bonds also will not be a debt or obligation of Washoe County. So, therefore, I move to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, as requested by Doral Academy of Northern Nevada, and to approve a resolution approving Public Finance Authority Charter School Revenue Senior Bonds, Doral Academy of Northern Nevada, series 2017A1, and Public Finance Authority Charter School Revenue Subordinate Bonds, Doral Academy of Northern Nevada, series 2017B, the bonds for purposes of section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have no further public comment. Please call for the vote. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Please cast your vote, and please check your vote as it comes up on the screen. The motion carries. Thank you very much, and Mr. Manager.
All right, item number 18, again, is a public hearing pursuant to NRS 453A.350, subsection 2, on an application from MMNV2 Holdings 5 LLC, formerly MedMen of Nevada 2 LLC, to move a marijuana cultivation facility from the location issued with a State of Nevada Provisional Medical Marijuana Certificate at 85 Isidore Court, Sparks, Nevada, APN 53047011, to 140 Investors Place, Sparks, Nevada, APN 53047018. And if approved, direct staff to notify the State of Nevada in writing of the Board of County Commissioners' approval of the relocation requests.
Thank you. Do, Commissioners, are there any questions, comments?
I have, Ms. Kathy, are they on, for this, or, because I didn't see if they were, okay, I have on the agenda for public comment, Ms. Kathy Branthorst, and I noticed that Ms. Branthorst is in the room now. Ms. Branthorst, we are on item number 18.
All right. My name is Kathy Branthorst, and I am the United States President. Let's see, to move a marijuana cultivation facility from the location issued with a State of Nevada Provisional Medical Marijuana Certificate at 85 Isidore Court, Sparks. I hope not, because we do have one already on South Virginia Street, and that's the same spot that the buses all go down on South Virginia Street. And there's nothing but complaints about the marijuana being stolen from that location, and they cannot afford to purchase the marijuana either, but they still take it with them anyway. And the doctors are telling me that the marijuana is not usually used for their medical purposes, that they get high on it. And being high on the marijuana, and also, they can kill and murder, and not even know that they did this until later, when they wake up. And I just wanted to let you know, the marijuana should be actually destroyed and not even used in these facilities at all. But I know that sometimes the medical does, you know, cost, and so people think that the marijuana is going to cure them. It does not cure them at all. And if they need to use this, I think they should get it through the doctors or through the, what do you call these? Well, you know, where they order the, I stopped all of a sudden, but they can get the prescription, thank you, right through, you know, and get it off the prescription instead of selling it, you know, through facilities that aren't even on the agenda at all. And I think that this should be done with doctors also, and also, prescriptions should be more into marijuana, instead of just selling it purposely on the streets.
Thank you, Ms. Branthorst.
I have signed in also, Mr. William Gilbert, but I don't see him in the room, so we will close public comment and bring this back to the board. Do I have a motion, do I hear a motion to accept this? Do I hear a motion?
It's your district.
Oh, did we, did we do a motion already?
I move to approve the, to move the marijuana cultivation facility.
An all second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. We've done public comment, any additional comments? Everybody, please signify by saying, if everybody who supports this, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen and check your vote up above. All those, it looks like everybody's in favor, so we will consider that passed, and Mr. Manager.
That takes us on to item number 19, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person. It may be pending matters both on and off the commission's agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made by the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. I have on the agenda, Tammy Holdstill. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Tammy Holdstill, for the record. I was going to talk about cabs. NRS 2241945 does not make anything specific into what a cab should be. I noticed that in Washoe County, 5425, you guys try to narrow it down and try and make it specifically for developing purposes only, but what that does, it eliminates you hearing from your public. By having the cabs the way they are set up at the current, before the recent year or so, having the police and the fire all come to speak, and the residents being able to address certain situations, they don't have to take off time work to come see you. They don't have, it makes your lives easier, it makes our lives easier, because they can go after work. It makes it easier on me, because then I don't have to be here with you guys, which I'm retired, and I'd like to be retired. It's important that the cabs remain on their specified dates. There is money set aside for your employees to be doing those cabs, and they should keep doing those cabs. I also want to address one of the comments I heard earlier today about acre lots and housing and North Valleys. First of all, I'm really excited to hear that North Valleys is part of your interest or your section. It would be nice to see you come out and see us. Also, I would also like to bring up, there are more than just millennials who have the monies to purchase things, and you have more families that are coming in that want the rural lifestyle. So, going to apartments constantly and six homes to an acre, a lot of people don't want that. They want their kids to have the life that they didn't have, or, like me, I did have. I would like to see attitudes changed a little. I would think that would be good. So, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. William Gilbert, and again, I do not see Mr. Gilbert in the room, so last on my list is Ms. Kathy Branthorst. room, so last on my list is Ms. Kathy Branthorst.
Yes, my name is Kathy Branthorst, and also, well, I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, you had here on one of the items, Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, and you also had 183 acres of property from the city of Reno. Yes, you also mentioned the old US Highway 395 and Town Drive and Rhodes Road. I'm thinking Sky Mountain is the area that we are talking about, and the Sky Mountain has a few houses on that street, but not very many at all. It's just on the corner, right by the freeway. And also, there was $100,000 and $50,000 that was stolen for two houses, I believe it was, but we never got our money returned to us if we're not going to be moving in. Also, I noticed that you're putting up more poles and more wires in that area because you can't, cannot afford to actually move into those houses. I understand that there were two houses, and the poles and wires are already setting up in that area, which they never had, no poles and wires, but now there will be because those, those people are starting to move into that area anyway without our permission. And I just wanted to let you know that this should never be done, because it's illegal for anybody to move into the Sky Mountain without permission and stealing rent money, $50,000 and $100,000. Also, I just wanted to mention, too, I'm still on C Street. I was hoping to move out very soon. As I mentioned before, I am now homeless, and hopefully, I won't be out on the street very long. The people have moved in, and I hope you treat them very nicely, because they are very good people in that area, and they do need a lot more good people. And I just wanted to let you know that some of the capital improvements funds, like $391,865.90, to increase expenditure authority for capital projects. Now, you don't really say what the capital is.
That is the last public comment signer I have, so we will bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager?
That takes us to item- For information on topics for future agendas.
Commissioners? Mr. Manager? Do you have anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Herman? Nope. There it is.
There it is. All right. Yeah, I agree with Ms. Still, because, about cabs, and I agree with her about one acres, because I, I've never lived on anything smaller than that, and that was pretty small, so I can understand that very clearly. And, and I don't, it's hard for people that have never lived in the country to, to understand what it's like in the country. You know, it's just, it's hard for me to imagine living in town. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Any other comments from any other Commissioners? With that, we are adjourned.